I think that's the best is beautiful.
All right, ready Russ?
Ready.
Ready or than I was.
That's better.
Guess we're not ready. All good Russ? Good evening. I'd like to call the regular borough council meeting of November 28th, 2022 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 7th, 2022 according to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Will the court please call a roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Here.
Councilwoman Neubauer?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Here.
Councilwoman Potter?
Here.
And Councilwoman Revulinski?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Please stand and join me for a moment of silence and a salute to our flag.
I'd like to introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have a presentation this evening from the Historical Preservation Committee. So Randy Ruth is here to present his biannual report for historic preservation. So I'll introduce Randy and he has some slides.
I can stand right here at the podium, that's fine. Okay, good evening. I am Randy Ruth, Chairman of Milltown Historic Preservation Committee, and I'm here tonight to present to council the committee's no less than biannual obligation outlined by Ordinance Number 061243, Subsection 3. Here's an outline of what is to come. What is the Milltown Historic Preservation Advisory Committee? What criteria is outlined for structures with historic significance? A list of historic sites within the borough, general recommendations, outline of promotional activities including our advisory, educational, and informational contributions to the community, grants and funding opportunities, and how to obtain them, and then some final thoughts. What is the Milltown Historic Preservation Advisory Committee? The Milltown HPC is not the Milltown Historical Society. We are not focused on the history of the people and their activities. However, we are focused on supporting the Milltown Historical Society by working with them to achieve similar goals, as both groups are connected with the history of the borough. The Milltown Historic Preservation Committee was established in December 2006 as an advisory committee to the council and planning/ zoning board. However, it is not recognized by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and therefore has no legal grounds to function as intended in any formal advisory manner to the Planning and Zoning Board. Since the Milltown Historic Preservation Committee is not legally recognized by the state, it is not eligible for state funding or other government funding programs. The criteria for the historic preservation sites, buildings, and structures has already been laid out by the National Park Service by way of the National Historic Register Criteria. Some key points that should be noted is that a building or structure should be associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our past, are associated with the lives of persons significant in our past, or embody the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction that represents the work of a master, or that possesses high artistic values, or that represent a significant and distingual entity whose components may lack individual distinction, or have yielded or may be likely to yield information important to prehistory or history. On top of that, the site, building, or structure should be at least 50 years old and possess integrity from the period during which it's earned its significance. Integrity can be defined as a high degree of retention of character-defining features that permits a property to convey a strong sense of its historic qualities. This is a rather high bar and certainly recognizes that just because something is old, it doesn't automatically make it historic. Essentially, the case for the structure needs to be made that it is historic, and some entity, preferably a Historic Preservation Commission, would make that determination based on the merits presented to it. So we have identified, we have defined historic and established a criteria. Now we move towards what buildings might be eligible to be considered historic within the borough. This was done in 1979 by the Middlesex County Inventory of Historic Cultural and Architectural Resources. In about 2007, this inventory was revisited and maps were created, which lists the properties very clearly. You will see some excerpts on the following slides. Some of the highlights include over 140 sites, buildings, or structures, both in Milltown and a few in North Brunswick. Currently, there is one historic district as a state opinion, which runs through the borough, and that is the Raritan River Railroad right-of-way. By proxy, the Raritan River Railroad Freight Station would be considered a contributing structure to the district. Currently, this district is being reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Office to better define its boundaries. Of particular interest is the Michelin Spur that includes the trestle over the Lawrence Brook and the extent of the line into the Ford Avenue redevelopment property. The borough will be automatically updated by the State Historic Preservation Office if a new opinion is issued. The Mill condominiums, formerly the Russell Playing Card Factory and India Rubber Company, is the only nationally recognized building in the borough. The former Forney House and Clinic, Mill Dam, Raritan Spur, including the bridge over the Lawrence Brook, and Meyer Rubber Company/Michelin Tire Company, aka Ford Avenue Redevelopment Site, all had some sort of opinion given by the State Historic Preservation Office as being potentially significant. New to this list is the recent opinion on the old South Main Street Firehouse. Here is a map of about 90% of Milltown historic sites. Purple highlight indicates a potential historic district with yellow representing the current area under review for rehabilitation by the borough. Here is north Milltown with a high concentration of historic buildings on Main Street and the adjacent. The south Milltown area, subject to the current rehabilitation study, has a very high concentration of historic buildings. Here are some statistics. 18% of the buildings predate the formation of the borough. Many of the properties don't have published construction dates, and if we only look at the data we are certain of, 32% of the buildings predate the borough formation of 1896. 82% of the properties are over 100 years old. Only one building is less than 50 years old and would not be considered eligible as historic. So in other words, 98% of the area could be considered historic by the most basic metrics. Some general recommendations for the council are to pursue and adopt the historic preservation element of the Borough Master Plan, followed by the adoption of a Historic Preservation Commission. The New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law is enabling legislation which offers a means for municipality to strengthen demolition process of existing buildings in the borough and help sculpt new construction design criteria for more compatible architectural type for parcels subject to redevelopment or rehabilitation. It would also begin a path towards being a certified local government, which opens up opportunities for the borough from the state that are currently being missed. An historic preservation element of the master plan would help target adaptive reuse opportunities for borough-owned structures for which there is funding. Finally, the consideration of historic zones and districts. This was submitted in late 2008 to the borough and was listed in the 2009 master plan. Since then, the only reference to this in the current master plan reexamination report is listed as valid, and the only detailed discussion found is in the 2009 plan, which is essentially, which is not easily accessible online and outdated. It was replaced by the 2019 one, so usually there's not reference to something that, you know, over 10 years ago. Finally, the Middlesex County Open Space and Cultural Landscape Plan does not include Milltown whatsoever. Here's an outline. "The plan will be a key component of the county's efforts to enhance environmental community resilience. In addition to addressing resilience, the plan will help to define the cultural landscape identity of Middlesex County. The landscape plan will be used to guide land use and economic development decisions while capitalizing on ecosystem services and other contributions the landscape of Middlesex County can provide. It will serve as a flexible decision-making framework for sustainability, resilience, and equitable planning." End quote. "If the Borough 2040 contact person could please reach out to be part of this plan, it could provide leverage for the municipality to obtain assistance for a variety of potential community projects. For example, the Schwindeman Cabin, which is intended to be a nature center and could be considered historic if so needed, when it certainly would be, it's over 50 years old, or other properties and landmarks yet to be thoroughly identified." Some specific site recommendations address the adaptive reuse of South Main Street Firehouse and Cottage Avenue Firehouse as potential community service centers. Important thing to note is that both the firehouses were considered under threat in 2019 by Preservation New Jersey and made their top 10 list. The same was true for the Michelin site in 2005, which has since been partially demolished and has only been a different sort of eyesore. This represents a missed opportunity for cultural redevelopment and investment. That being said, there are portions of the site which may be worth saving through local protections once a historic preservation element of the Borough Master Plan is adopted. This includes the iconic smokestack, water tower, and remaining structures. The committee would also like to offer presentations to the Planning/ Zoning Board on their findings so as to further fulfill their obligations and to offer information as it relates to the South Main Street Rehabilitation Study. "Since the borough does not have a commission, and only a committee, we are active in the promotion, we are active in the promotion of historic preservation even though the borough offers few resources. This year, we have begun fleshing out our borough landing page. We hope that in the near future we can promote our surveys reliably via the newsflash function and add additional materials which are currently available from the National Park Service and New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office. Thus far, we have had two surveys. The first was in 2021 and was geared towards general understanding of preservation in Milltown, and the second was, was sent out by email from the initial contact list, and was geared towards what sort of educational components people would be more interested in: hands-on workshops, or architectural tours, or written technical information. As of recently, 81% want informational resources and 66 are interested in hands-on workshops. We have offered one hands-on community workshop, which was for masonry restoration that included the safe removal of paint from brick foundation, repointing, and appropriate mortar selection. A small workshop was done at Milltown Day, and based on our feedback we received from the most recent survey, we will work towards another workshop in 2023. So far, people seem to be most interested in identifying architectural details, which would dovetail nicely with a potential collaboration with other borough entities to offer an historic architectural walking tour. Other more recent potential regional collaborations include outreach to Highland Park Historical Commission and Middlesex County for potential attendance at the historic community events such as History Day. Last fall, we had a presentation, a presentation from Preservation New Jersey, which gave insights into what other municipalities do to plan, grow, and incorporate historic preservation into their development. One of the more ambitious long-term goals is to use GIS to create interactive maps to better educate the public on historic land use in the borough. This has been done in part already by the county, and we'd like to have this information linked or embedded on our landing page in the near future. Grants and funding opportunities for the borough at this time are extremely limited, and in some ways simply nonexistent, given the current management of the borough-owned resources. Nearly all require that the municipality be a certified local government to accept funds. For fiscal year 2022, over $500,000 was awarded in Middlesex County and is out of a total of $4.8 million from the New Jersey State Historical Commission. There are a few other grants that periodically come around, such as one from the New Jersey DOT, but they have strict requirements that are not very applicable within the context except for the items along historic roads or railroads. These grants do not require the borough to be involved, but they do require an active 501(c)(3) to distribute funds. There is funding for municipalities which want to have a historic preservation element conducted, but the funds are limited and are typically worked out between the municipality and the planning professional on a case-by-case basis. It should be noted that a lack of allocated municipal funding is not justification for not pursuing a historic preservation element of the master plan. If the council were to initiate a historic preservation element of the master plan, this would leverage opportunities stemming from the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan. This would also allow property owners access to greater funding pools and provide a service of consultation and an opinion as to what might be the most fiscally advantageous options available to them. The takeaway here is that in order to move forward in any meaningful way, the borough needs to have a historic preservation element of the master plan. A lack of action by the council to adopt the ordinance, which would permit a historic preservation element, results in continued missed opportunities. Overall, this would be applicable to any and all municipal buildings which are deemed historic, and such could be in part maintained by direct county or state funds. A great example of this is that the county offers municipalities with open to the public facilities up to $15,000 a year in capital grants with a cash match of 50%. In the context of the Milltown Historical Society Museum and Annex, which are both owned by the borough, the current fire alarm system upgrades could be nearly all paid for. On the other hand, if the borough were to have a historic preservation element and had ordinances which recognize these structures as historic, they would not be subject to such stringent fire codes, rather they'd be subject to uniform building subcode, and the upgrades required would be significantly less. If there was a historic preservation element, code officials for the borough would also be aware of the tens of thousands of dollars, specifically $20,530,000, the Milltown Historical Society put towards the maintenance of these buildings in the past few years. In fact, this past September, a grant was attempted to be applied for, by the borough, through the borough, but it was not obtained. In part, this was due to a lack of a specific allocation of funding within the borough budget for property maintenance that could be used to acquire a matching grant. Overall, the struggle for maintenance of the building elements creates a less optimal look for our Main Street and commercial corridors and reduces potential commercial tax revenues. The photos on the slide show a recent facade rehabilitation taken on by a property owner on South Main Street, which was done in a way as to not remove any of the character of the building. So essentially, there, it's really hard to tell, but they redid the whole porch. They actually took down all the railings, repainted them. I didn't get any in-progress photos, but it was a pretty good job, and things pretty much kind of looked the same, but all the details are retained. This is juxtaposed by historic porch, which was lost earlier this year on North Main Street, and it's less historically appropriate replacement. Due to a lack of a historic preservation commission, the result was a replacement which lost its defining character. These are the, I guess it's cut off, so you can't see what it looks like now, but anybody driving by North Main knows what it looks like. And essentially, the railings are much higher, they're plastic, the things are out of proportion on the building, which would otherwise be retain much of its historic character, except for having two doors on the front, but other than that, now the whole porch looks completely new. A historic preservation commission within the borough may require the review of construction and offer guidance on the appropriate design. They would also have been alerted to the existing federal tax incentives to take this loss and create an opportunity to convert residential buildings into income-producing commercial spaces. The solution is to have any historic preservation ordinance which are codified. The reason is that the state and federal government know that the local municipality knows its history best, and thus they are enabled, through the municipal land use law, to decide their fate and how their history is protected for future generations. And the need for the adoption of historic preservation element of the Borough Master Plan must be initiated by this council. There's no good reason to wait other than to be intentionally negligent. Last presentation, I had asked that this council take this presentation into consideration and act now, as within 90 days, because it has been 16 years and this committee was created, and apparently, since this committee was created, and apparently there were talks for the past 13 years calling for historic preservation element. Coincidentally or not, the result, not necessarily of my request, was a study on the rehabilitation of South Main Street. By supplementing the current rehabilitation efforts with historic preservation of the master plan and allocating funds in next year's municipal budget for building maintenance, I believe that the existing assets within the borough can be leveraged by the borough to do more with less and economically incentivize growth for its residents. I would like to thank the council and our council liaison, Margaret O'Donnell, our previous liaison, Councilman Peretti, and all the other members of the committee who could not be here, and I thank everybody for their attention. So, I think, any questions or comments?
Questions from the council?
So I'll start, if that's okay. So a couple of the things that you mentioned, I'm happy to say that we have begun to address, including getting approval to add those links to the website, so our residents can actually look for, in the very near future, links to the National Historic Register and some of the county resources such as the GIS. And we also, I brought the concern about not having matching grant funds in a pool of money available to the chair of our finance committee, so that will be a discussion for next year, because not every grant is known about at the time that the, you know, budget is put together. So it wouldn't be just for the grants that you've spoken of, but for grants that come our way in general. But I wanted to see if you would speak a little bit about some of the concerns. But I wanted to see if you would speak a little bit about some of the concerns that residents immediately have when they hear that there's a commission that wants to have oversight or involvement, or make, I'll use air quotes like you did before, recommendations. They may see that as problematic, time-consuming, and potentially expensive. So could you address that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends on how the framework of a historic preservation commission would be put together. There are things known as Historic Architectural Review Boards that are a part of larger municipalities like Philadelphia and New York City, which are definitely a brick wall, a red tape, where they say, "No, it has to be this material," and it's very nitpicky, and it has to define a very particular characteristic. Whether or not something like that's really appropriate for Milltown, which I don't think it is, would be ultimately to the Borough Council to decide how strong or weak that commission would act. So there's a lot of notions out there that the commission would say, "You can only paint your house these particular twenty-five colors." Well, maybe, I don't see a lot of new house painting going on anyway, I don't necessarily think that it would be so much of a burden, but if a certain area was identified by the Borough within the Borough and residents were notified, they'd be able to offer that particular feedback by way of a historic district. So, once you form the commission, and then you start saying, "Well, this area is historic," then you can sculpt it in a particular way, trying to find the particular defining characteristics, and then you would think that the residents would want to retain those defining characteristics. So it's really up to the citizens within those areas to really make their concerns as strongly one way or the other as to how strong a commission can act, or how strict a historic district could be. And then things are very fluid, it is practically so hard to reverse these things, because they would be codified, but it would be not much different than any other zoning law. Or, so, just like you can't build a fence right up against your property line if you're trying to do some sort of rehabilitation, at least it's a way to slow down, in a lot of ways, demolition in its basic form, say, "Well, are you sure you want to demolish that?" Maybe a lot of people, it gives a chance for residents to voice their opinions on the community about what matters to them before it's gone.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I had a question. Randy, you had a lot of good information there, but there's one particular statistics section that you were going over about the South Main Street, how many houses or properties.
Yes.
Could you just, again, I'm sure that would be useful for people to know, I thought that was interesting, and I didn't write it down fast enough.
Yeah, so...
I think you had ninety-eight percent of South Main Street.
I mean, basically.
You were working up to that number, so you had a couple stats.
If you were to go down the list, and you would see that was presented by the Borough Planner, they're using geospatial data that everybody has access to throughout the state. The numbers are less than great, and what I mean by that is that there are a lot of properties that have no construction dates whatsoever, so we don't know if it was built in 1850, 1854, what have you. So depending on how you put together the numbers, that's where you get, I said eighteen percent of the buildings predate the formation of the Borough. That's what the information that we have. If you were to deal with the other data, then it would be actually thirty-two percent if you include the unknown.
Okay.
The unknown, because you would assume that if you don't know the date, it's actually on, error on the older side of things. And then, yeah, I said eighty-two percent of the properties were over a hundred years old, so, and then, by the way, which I need to mention, this is fifty-four properties, all right, so the percentage is, you know, one counts for two percent. So, that's when I get to the ninety-eight percent. That's because only one building, one building of those fifty-four, I think was built in 1978. So everything else is older than 1972.
Okay.
So therefore, the minimum criteria is fifty years, just about everything's older than that, but a significant portion is a hundred.
That's great, and then, if you want to do one last question, I know, I think this was explained to me when I was the liaison for Councilwoman O'Donnell, the history versus prehistory, that always, that confused me the first time I heard it, so I wasn't sure. It was, I know you have as a bullet point there, I thought, add a sentence, clarify what that is real quick.
Right, so that statement is taken verbatim essentially from the State Historic Preservation Office, which takes it from the National Park Service. And the idea was that if there was a, prehistory typically refers to Native American sites. So if there was a particular area within Milltown of a particular Native American importance for archaeological digs or something along those lines, that would bring merit for it being historic, even if you don't necessarily know anything about that, a particular person or things that we associate with more modern history.
That's all I had, thanks.
So, Randy, I just had a couple of questions, and thanks for all the information. I want to point to that picture there of the house on Main Street that was, had the car accident and it ripped off the porch. So, are you saying that if there was a historical commission of some kind that would sort of dictate how that should be, how that porch should have been replaced?
Well, we could, what I'm saying is that we could review and make a recommendation, right?
Because you mentioned plastic versus wood.
Right, so the idea is we want to retain the historic character of the Main Street, right? And that dictation, in this case, from what I understand, it was an insurance claim.
Right.
Right? So it's not like it would cost, so usually, if somebody says, "I want to modify my building," right? Let's say, "I want to add more towards the front of the house," we would say, "Zoning Code say you can't do that. You got to keep it back ten feet, or you have to ask for a variance." This would be the same thing, where if somebody says, "All right, I want to tear down my porch" because they feel like it, or a car runs, whatever it might be, and "I want to rebuild it, here are the drawings, this is what it's going to look like." A historic preservation commission may look at that and say, "You know what? This doesn't really retain that character, can you do something better?" And with a weak commission, they can always appeal. At the end of the day, it can end up at the Borough Council, and if there's certainly a burden on the property owner where they say they can't do that...
And that's where I'm going with this.
Yeah, then we would, like, let me give another example. Solar panels are a great example, where in some historic districts, they say, "Look, solar panels are out of context on your roof, we don't want solar panels." Well, depending on the municipality, you may want to promote them. So there's a conflict of environmental interests and historic preservation or aesthetic qualities there, and it's typically done on a case-by-case basis. I can say that my philosophy, and I think within the philosophy, or from what I've gathered from residents that I've talked to and people that I've talked to on the council, about what people might be comfortable with would be something of a weak commission, where we wouldn't necessarily draw the line in the sand and say, "You have to do it this way," but maybe in a particular instance where you have a developer, where it's not necessarily a homeowner or a property owner, we would say, "Okay, Mr. Developer, we know that you have the ability to retain this character, you're not on a fixed income, can you do this?" Because it's better for everybody in the community.
Right, so I'm going to go back to that house again, because that house, hasn't that house, hasn't there been an addition that's been added to the back?
Sure, there is, yeah.
So, the fact that there, an addition has been added to the back of that house, does that still make it historic?
Well, so that's something that people with master's degrees struggle with and debate, okay? So it depends on what period you're trying to retain the historic character. Now, if I'm going down Main Street, I don't necessarily see the back of that building, right?
Yeah, why, except I've actually walked back there, and that's how I know.
Yeah, so if you don't see it, and it's not a defining character of the neighborhood, then the rear of the property isn't necessarily a contributing component of the historic character that you're trying to retain, so it's a moot point. So yes, it may not be historic, but that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about essentially facades.
Okay.
But you're saying even if we did have a historic commission, they couldn't, we could still wind up with a plastic porch?
It's possible, yeah, it depends on how strong, and then certainly how much value the commission would take a look at it and say, "No, this is, you can't do this, you know, we really don't want this." Residents might be able to voice their concern.
And that gets into the area where we, you know, we had talked about, and I believe John Barry, our planner, has weighed in on this, and we brought it up at the Planning and Zoning Board, and that is where you really get into some issues where we can't, we don't want to get into compelling homeowners on what to do, right? So that's where a stronger commission could be a problem, and apparently, it's not that the Borough's being negligent, there just hasn't been an appetite to compel homeowners. Developers, a different story, because they come and have to do a, you know, land use plan when they come before the Planning and Zoning Board. However, for, you know, using this as an example, it's an income property, obviously, because it has two doors and it's being rented out, they had an accident, they get an insurance settlement, it sits like that with no porch for a long time, and then they come along. So I'm not sure how having a commission in place, you know, other than slowing the process down even further when it was sitting there empty would necessarily compel them to do, you know, the beautiful woodwork that was there beforehand.
So a commission oversees the element, right? So there's two different things, there's a historic preservation element of the master plan, which basically is the official outline and everything in writing. A municipality can stop there, right? But really, it's having a historic preservation commission, which then, when something comes up to question, they would be the professionals and have the professionals to hash it out as it comes.
Right.
In this case, you would, you may have facade ordinance on Main Street that says, "Look, everything is the way it is." Well, if something were to happen, then you have the paper already in place to say, "Well, a replacement in kind is the preferred option." And then it doesn't, yes, it may come before a commission, but they already know what they need to do.
Right, and just to refresh everyone's memory, when we did have Mr. Barry weigh in on that, it was his opinion, and he's our Borough Planner, that unlike some other towns that have a historic commission, like Lambertville or Cape May, that the Main Street in Milltown had already gone through enough, you know, updates in the way that it's zoned, we have different areas that mix in together, so we'll have an older house with a newer house. So it wasn't his recommendation that we pursue a historical commission. So, but, you know, you gave an excellent presentation, as always, so we appreciate it.
And most of the properties that you referred to are on that, you know, Washington to Coolthaw stretch, which we've kind of said, "Hey, we kind of need to look at this and talk about rehabbing in some shape or form," just to, because there's a lot of empty spots.
Yeah, and if there was a historic preservation element and a commission, there would be a lot more money for those residents to pull from.
Well, that's, yeah, that's...
That's food for thought. I had one more question. So on your historic sites, they're all numbered.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what number sixty-two is?
So, that list was put together by somebody before my time, whoever started this commission. And that list, I could get back to you, I have that address on a spreadsheet, I can definitely share it with you with the most recent photo.
Because it looks really close to like Washington Avenue, right by the Mill Pond, and I'm guessing, wow, is that the Golden Lion or not?
Well, I'm sure the Golden Lion is going to be there now. I didn't mention in the presentation that there are funds for municipalities that have historic preservation element of the master plan for moving or for helping historic resources be moved or adapted if they're in a flood plain. So there is some money out there, there are financial schemes to assist those properties.
Like the Golden Lion.
Like the Golden Lion, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I actually, Randy, I know you're extremely passionate about this, and this is at least the second time since I've been up here this year for you to come up and put forth all this effort.
Why, and you won't report?
Yeah, exactly, and I appreciate that, and I for one have like, I've kind of turned a new leaf here. I see that there's value in the historic preservation commission, and I think that I would like to see what a draft kind of agreement would look like, where it's, we have the commission, there is value added to our master plan, but at the same time, it's not a lay down the law of "you have to do this," but as far as the recommendations go with folks along Main Street or identified areas, I think I would like to see that and see what one of those agreements look like, and at least try and pursue it. I think it's in the best interest of the town overall. I know when I drive downtown, I always think about, you know, wow, how it used to look, and people always say that Milltown has such charm, and I would like to see that maintained, especially as we have so many projects going on on Main Street and potential for more with some of the vacant lots, so. That's my two cents, I don't know if anyone else is on board, but I for one would like to explore it and see what it looks like.
So the commission is advisory, so, and Councilwoman O'Donnell is the liaison, so through the committee, through the liaison, she can, we can speak about it further to the full council, make a recommendation on proceeding forward. However, given the caveat that we would need to speak with our master planner first.
Of course, it all comes with, it's all in his light.
So the master plan was done in 2019, right? And so that was not considered, probably because you weren't on the Historic Preservation Committee, is that correct? So there was no mention of it when we did our master plan in 2019? It'll be up again in ten years, and you're looking to amend the master plan to add a historic preservation element.
You can update the master plan anytime.
We can update that at any time, I was going to say, and also, you know, we're not too far away at 2023 to get to nineteen, it's probably a good time for us to really start buckling down and determine that when the time does come, what do we want to include and what don't we want to include. So I look forward to seeing something along the lines of what a weaker version of a commission would look like and, you know, all the benefits that we could obtain through the Borough.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Randy, we have an agenda item for our next meeting, obviously.
I guess so.
To talk about that December 29th, I'll mention that in my reports, reiterating that we have a change of our meeting cadence and so forth, but I just wanted to thank you, I know you were nervous about presenting, but you did a great job, and your passion and the committee's passion, some of your committee members filed in support since you've been talking, so, thank you.
Just to add to it, we will be starting with Mr. Barry to move forward on the rehabilitation plan, and one of the elements of that is we plan to do town halls and surveys, so it may be helpful to put some surveys out to the folks, especially that live on Main Street, about how they feel about this, and get, and, you know, hopefully, we get a good turnout and we can get feedback, not only about the rehabilitation of Main Street, but of many of these topics that you've been, you know, bringing to our attention for quite some time now. So we want to hear what all the residents think, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
All right, next we have the approval of minutes from...
Do you just want to...
Sure, oh.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the minutes from November 14th, 2022. May I have a motion in a second?
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any comments or corrections? Okay, so may I, so all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And Councilwoman Newbauer abstains. All right, now we have comments from the audience on resolutions. Next on the agenda, if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close audience comments and go on to the bill list. Will the clerk please read by title only, Bill Resolution 255, 2022?
Resolution 255, 2022 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $849,161.66.
You've heard the reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
I move that the bill list be approved as typed.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Randy. Council President Sabrina?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilman Revolinsky?
No.
Motion carries.
When voting on resolutions, oh, I'm sorry, we're going on to the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions, or does any council person want to pull any resolution from the consent agenda? Hearing none, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas... Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting. And whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that these resolutions be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any discussion?
Just one question that I have.
Sure.
On Resolution Two Fifty-Nine, 2022, is the effective date January twenty-fifth, 2022 or 2023?
That would be 2023. And I'll correct that when the resolution is printed. I believe that's the start of the Academy Day.
Thank you.
Sorry, thanks.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revolinsky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Now we will go on to council reports. We'll start with the Department of Public Safety, Councilwoman Dave Potter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I have three reports this evening. The first report is from the Milltown Police Department from Chief Brian Cannelli. Residents are reminded to continue to drive safely and use extra caution as utility and Rover continue throughout our town. We appreciate your cooperation and patience during these projects. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns, and non-emergent type calls to seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-eleven-hundred. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use nine-one-one. Any concerns and or complaints can be submitted using the official Borough website or by calling the Milltown Police directly. Thank you for your cooperation. Please be safe and enjoy the holiday season. Madam Mayor, my second report is from the Milltown Fire Department. This Friday, December second, the Milltown Fire Department is delivering Santa for the annual tree lighting ceremony at Borough Hall at seven P.M. And then on Saturday, December third, the Milltown Fire Department will be hosting a Pictures with Santa fundraiser at the firehouse from ten A.M. to two P.M. And on Saturday, December seventeenth, Santa's tour through Milltown will be from six to eight P.M. Also, too, Madam Mayor, we would like to also especially thank Assistant Chief Anthony Fama for his efforts in getting the A.R.P. FFG grant. That was recently just part of the resolution for twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's going to the Milltown Fire Department. So we'd like to personally thank him for his efforts with that. Finally, my last report is from the Milltown Rescue Squad. From October twenty-twenty-two, total calls were ninety. In Milltown was fifty-nine. The New Jersey Turnpike, we had fifteen, and there were sixteen mutual aid calls. If you have any questions about a bill you received, please contact our billing company directly at eight-seven-seven-two-one-four-six-zero-one-eight. Please do not call the Milltown Police Department directly about an ambulance bill. You can also visit their website at ambulancebillingoffice.com or visit our website, milltownrescuesquad.org to get this link. The Rescue Squad will also be helping the Milltown Fire Department to escort Santa around the town on December seventeenth. They will post St. Nick's schedule on Facebook as a reminder on when you can expect to see him. And until then, kids should continue to be on their best behavior. Anyone who's interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruit@milltownrescuesquad.org to learn more, and they'll be happy to answer any questions. Finally, our next planning board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December seventh. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Utilities, Councilman James Peretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Starting with water and sewer, along with all markouts, emergency markouts, and daily work orders, the department has the following to report. Hydrant flushing for this cycle, as per the D.E.P., was completed on November sixteenth. P.S.E.N.G. markouts continue through the whole town with some being repeated for time issues. Unfortunately, water meters are still on backwater and replacements will resume as soon as the inventory is received. Only emergency meter replacements are currently occurring. The mixers are on order for the Church Street pump stations. Please check Channel Fifteen and milltownnj.org for more water and sewer updates. For the Electric Utility Department, substation continues to be checked daily. The transformer inspections and testing are completed. This is a sophisticated process which tracks data from many different tests and can predict problems and failures before they happen. Excessive line clearance was performed, particularly on the southeast side of town. Tree interference with overhead wires is the main cause of outages, and this work continues to be essential for department reliability. The department members, the utility department members, with the help of the D.P.W. crew installed the necessary poles, anchors, and guy wires to install the safety netting at Michelin Field. There is a little more to do, and the department is waiting for the ground to be firm again after the rain to complete the rest of the project. Several residents reported streetlight issues. Approximately five lights have been repaired. The trailer for the Boys' Gals Holiday Tree Sale has been connected. Utility department members assisted East Brunswick with holding a utility pole for a water main break excavation. A reminder to pop all balloons and properly dispose of them. Do not let balloons go free. They are dangerous if they contact power lines. We had a recent power outage due to that exact reason. And that concludes my utility reports.
Great, thank you. Next is Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with all regular sanitation and bulk collections, the D.P.W. has the following to report. D.P.W. staff has assisted the Water Department in repairing a broken water main on Tracy Drive. The Albert Avenue bathrooms have been winterized for the season. Leaf pickup has taken place at various public places and parks and will be ongoing as time permits. All snow removal equipment has been inspected by the Borough mechanics in preparation for the upcoming winter season. Holiday decorations and lights are being put up at Borough Hall in preparation for the annual tree lighting on December second, 2022. Pot hole repair has taken place at several locations throughout town and will be ongoing. Leaf bag pickups continue. Please be patient during this busy season when you're going to pick up your leaf bags. Tree removal has taken place on both Chestnut as well as the Footbridge. And the American flags were removed from the poles on Main Street in preparation for the installation of the holiday decorations. And as always, you can check Channel Fifteen or milltownnj.org for further D.P.W. updates. And we also had a Board of Health meeting last Tuesday, which I can't remember the date off the top of my head. And I didn't write it down. But we discussed planning for next year's rabies clinic, which is going to be in May. And the health inspector is going to put it on the county website, and it'll be on our website as well. And we also talked about discussing further what we're going to pass on to next year's committee and everything. And that is all that I have to report to.
Great, thank you. Next, we have the Department of Recreation, Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will begin by saying that I have no library board report because the library board hasn't met since our last meeting. But the next meeting will take place on the second Tuesday, which is December thirteenth at six-thirty in the library. I have a few activities of the library that I wanted to highlight for you. Saturday, there is a Friends of the Library bling sale that they call Jingle Jangle Jewelry. So that might be worth stopping by. And on December fifth, the first of what we hope will be a series of family game nights will take place. The first of several yoga sessions will take place on the sixth, which is a Tuesday at ten. And there'll be another session on a Wednesday, the twenty-first, at one-thirty, checking out what dates and times might work best for participants. The J.K. fourth graders will be visiting and touring the library on Wednesday, the seventh. And there are several closures coming up for the holidays, December twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth and December thirty-first. All of those dates, the library will be closed. Regarding the Rec Advisory Committee, first, I would like to thank James Peretti for providing me with extensive notes from the meeting. I'm going to give you some highlights, but thank you, James. I was unable to attend because I was at the League of Municipalities Convention, which I will mention later in council comments. And I'll just mention a few highlights from the meeting that are not mentioned in the report separately. So regarding the pickleball court at Michelin Field, the nets have not been permanently anchored yet, but will be once the basketball hoop gets moved over there. So if you're seeing a temporary net up still, that is why. The youth basketball has great participation. Ninety kids signed up so far. Kickball had some confusion about the signups between the way that you signed up for Milltown Day with just a captain and the way you signed up for the fall program as individuals. It was postponed until the spring 2023, and we'll make sure that all of the instructions are very well documented. A flag football program was discussed, and we'll be checking out some nearby towns that have such programs and figure out if it's a viable program for Milltown. And some of the future ideas that came from the committee were to have more decorations along Main Street or possibly have something like a winter wonderland in the old D.P.W. site. Encouraging some non-sports activities such as STEM, culinary, art, career development, Toastmasters, and maybe something on nutrition. And some other activities might include golf, BMX bikes, and a bigger, loftier goal to have a recreation and/or community center. So I know that was a robust meeting, but we're covering some of the other things in the department report, so I'll move on to that. So from Ron Cephalon, our Director of the Recreation Department, he wanted you all to know how well registration was going for basketball, also to highlight the MAD Science Program, which is a new one that's going on on Tuesdays. And they'll be launching a LEGO STEM program as an after-school program in the winter as well. And we wanted to note that the tree lighting, while my colleague mentioned that Santa might be arriving around seven, we'd like to see people at the tree lighting as of six-thirty because that's when things will be getting started. And it, just wanted to remind everyone that it will be an inclusive tree, a holiday tree for all faith and celebrations. And you can bring an ornament celebrating your faith and attach it to the tree. And then lastly, I don't have much to add about the historic preservation since we had such an extensive presentation about discussions that have taken place throughout the year. But I did want to remind our residents that if they would like to participate in the next meeting, that it is off pace of the typical schedule and will actually be on the fifth Thursday, which is December twenty-ninth at six-thirty via Zoom. And a reminder for the 2023 schedule, it will remain on the fourth Thursdays, but the plan is to change the starting time to seven-thirty. So I think that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Okay, great, thank you. Next, we will move on to the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman Rich Revolinsky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment on Councilwoman O'Donnell's report there. The MAD Science Program on Tuesdays, my daughter is involved in that, and she is having an absolute blast. So if we have it again, anyone's out there is interested, it's really fun for the kids. They're doing a lot of fun stuff over there, so. Something different, something new, and I think it's a big hit.
Great to hear.
Tonight, for Environmental Commission Report, I'd like to announce that we are changing a couple of the dates for the meetings this month just due to conflicts with holidays. We also received approval to perform exterior wood preservation at the Schwendeman Log Cabin. It'll be a day of cleaning the wood, followed by a day of adding preservative, and then lastly, the grout between the logs in an effort to save that cabin. Hopefully, this is the start of taking some action to improving the grounds on this site, this Borough-owned property, and to start getting some access there and provide some benefits to the residents. That is all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, Department of Finance Administration and Planning, Councilman Phil Zambra.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a finance report tonight. For the Ford Avenue meeting, I was at the League of Municipalities with a few of our council folks here. But from what I understand from colleagues on the Ford Avenue Development Agency, it's status quo, and there wasn't really anything new to report. And then I have a short senior center report that was submitted by Deborah Cuddy. So the following activities continue to take place each week at the senior center. And these activities include, as always, aerobics, line dancing, yoga, Tai Chi billiards, walk aerobics, men's club, chorus, Spanish, arts and crafts, bingo, and a monthly visit from the VNA nurse. The following is a list of things that happened most recently and still yet to come in the coming weeks. I was at a wrap session on Tuesday, November twenty-second, with Jeanette at the senior center. It was a wrap session and lunch where the seniors and I got to talk and talk about many things, questions, anything that they had with Jeanette. And we provided feedback and how best to stay in the loop on things related to their questions. There was a trip to the Amish market on Wednesday, November twenty-third, and our seniors were excited to shop for their holiday food and desserts. This coming Wednesday, November thirtieth, at twelve noon, there will be a presentation from the Excelsior Group on senior health and wellness. There is a signup sheet on the bulletin board for those who would like to attend. On Monday, December fifth, there will be a theme holiday decorating pictures or greeting card workshop, which is sponsored by Middlesex County. That will be at twelve P.M. Sign up for this activity is required. It's a free activity for seniors, and signup will be available on the bulletin board. And on December seventh at twelve P.M., the seniors are having a guided meditation and relaxation class. This is also a free activity, and signup is required. One of the seniors also actually asked me for a shout-out that there are Toys for Tots boxes set up in the senior center. There are also two Toys for Tots boxes right outside the doors to Borough Hall. Being that this is the holiday season, all donations are welcome and encouraged. As a reminder, seniors do not have to join the Milltown Senior Club or attend activities at the senior center to arrange for a doctor's appointment or to take advantage of trips such as for food shopping. If you'd like to attend any of all of our programs, you can call Debbie Cuddy at seven-three-two-two-nine-six-zero-six-eight-one or email debby@dcuddy@milltownborough.com. Additional information, as always, can always be found on the website. Borough website by navigating to the senior center homepage. My advice is type in senior center in the search box. Let it guide you, click, and you're there. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Next, we will move on to our engineer report, Mr. McClellan.
Short report tonight, Madam Mayor. I just want to announce that preliminary plans for your foresting are just about complete. We plan to send to the Borough and the county during the first week of December.
Great, that's good news, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McClellan? Okay. Mr. Attorney, Pete and Mr. Vignola?
No report today.
All right. Back to my comments. I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. Enjoy time with your family and friends. And we have a lot of holiday activities coming up in the Borough over the next few weeks, so lots to look forward to. Almost too many to go through here this evening. So make sure you check the website and see all that's going on in town. I did hear several people mention the League of Municipalities. So just for the folks that are watching, that's a convention that goes on in Atlantic City for three days every November. It's put on by the New Jersey League of Municipalities. Our professionals can go and get continuing education credits. They have classes and symposiums. And it's also open to any elected official to go this year. I went, along with Councilman Zambrana, O'Donnell, and Potter. I went to a mayor's lunch, which highlighted the benefit of shared services. And, you know, people went to different talks that were given and the entire convention center floor. They have vendors, so we got to meet with the vendor that engages with the Fire Department about making new fire trucks. They had recreation ideas. They had some ideas for decorations. I mean, you name it, they have it. I mean, you name it, they have it. Even if you want to buy a new garbage truck, they have a vendor there for that. So it was a valuable experience, so we all, you know, took time off of our day jobs and went down there for three days, and so it was a good experience. So, and with that, I will move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before us this evening?
Just one, and this one goes towards Mr. McClellan over at CME. Hey, Mike, how are you? I saw on the bill list tonight a little bit for Northbrook Drive from November, and I was just wondering if you could provide any sort of insight or update on that.
I'm going to try. I've got a little bit of a raspy throat today. We are investigating what can be done without major permits over there. It appears that the borough has an existing storm sewer pipe with a head wall, and we did make a presentation note to the Public Works Committee about it. So we're putting together a small recommendation, working with Jeanette. We should have something hopefully soon to the committee for review.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any old business?
I want to see if it may not be relevant with Jeanette not here and unable to respond to this, and just if we've addressed the communications policies in any way since discussing it in the last maybe two months or so.
You mean the, which one?
I had asked about the social media policy specifically and how beneficial it might be for especially recreation programs to be able to use social media to promote new programs and registration dates and things like that.
I don't have an answer. We can ask her when she comes back. What I will say, Margaret, is I know that we're, when we are going to have the revamped website coming up early in 2023, so we had discussed having the component of that that could, so that would be a policy change, right? Meaning to rescind the social media policy if we decided to share.
If you wanted to do that, yeah, you would. It might be in our hand before we could do it.
Yeah, so it should come early 2023.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no other old business, I'll move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business they'd like to discuss this evening?
Just one from me, and really, this is a question from Mr. Vignola. I think it goes to you, or perhaps Mimi, you can assist with this one. But in regards to putting a public question on the ballot for next year, what's the process by which we have to take, and what deadlines are there in place?
For next year?
For next year.
For next year, you've got months. I can get you that sometime in the intervening, you know. If I have it to you by January of next year, you'll be well in advance.
Okay, so there is that much time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, your public questions, I think, are sometime in July, is like a cutoff, if memory serves me correctly, from the last ones we've done.
And any proposed question gets voted on by the council in order to be placed on there. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close new business and move on to audience comments. The public comment of our, portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. If a member of the public has specific questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Babe, how are you?
I just have a comment, or some comments.
Sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Gary Puznansky, 31 Cleveland Avenue. I was going to wing it, but I'm going to read it. On Wednesday, November 23rd, I received official notification that a candidate for Borough Council filed a motion contesting the results of the election that a recount will take place. While I do not know at this time what the outcome of the election will be, I do not want to let any more time go by without expressing my heartfelt gratitude to everyone in Miltown who supported me during my campaign for council. I'm honored and humbled by the number of people who cast their ballots for me as a first-time candidate for office, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Barbara Bait from 38 Harrison Avenue, and I just want to let anybody know, who doesn't know, that the Miltown Historical Society is going to be having a holiday concert at the American Legion Building on December 10th, Saturday, December 10th. The doors open at 11:00. The concert begins at 1:00. Stay there at 2:00. And then on December 11th, we're going to have a railroad model train display show at the American Legion, about the same time. I'm not sure if it's 10 to 3, something like that, but, and it should be a lot of fun. Everybody's welcome to come, and, well, I don't have any flyers with me, but I will for you do some flyers.
That'd be great. Looking forward to it, thank you.
Oh, before I go, I just want to say that at the holiday concert, we're going to be celebrating a Miltown native whose name is Dorothy Jensen Blanchard, and she was one of the first waves, one of the first U.S. Navy waves in 1942, 1943. And she went up through the ranks and was an assistant to admirals at the Pentagon and worked, and Eleanor Roosevelt came to her graduation. She has a lot of letters and her family, she's 99 years old, living in New Mexico, and her family's sending me a lot of her memorabilia for us to put on display. So we're going to celebrate her.
That's nice.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for sharing that, Barbara. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to council comments. Does any member of the council have any final comments this evening?
I just wanted to mention that, as Mayor Mayor stated, several of us attended the League of Municipalities Convention. I found it very valuable. I attended a number of sessions. There was one that I was closed out of because it was so popular. It was not just standing room only. I was not tall enough to see over the people who were surrounding the doorway because it was so full, and the people, the topic was the future of volunteer fire and rescue squads. So I was hoping to attend and share some information, but clearly, that's something of concern to residents and not just Miltown, but other towns as well. And there were a number of sessions about a really wide variety of items. I have lots of notes, I have flyers and handouts from the vendors, and we'll get them to the appropriate members of our staff and department heads and things like that. But thank you to Miltown for sending us. They cover the registration fee so that we can attend, and I think it's a very valuable experience for council members who can go. So thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else?
Mayor Mayor, I apologize, my apologies for not also reporting. I attended the Board of Education meeting for Councilwoman Revelinsky, who had a conflict that day on the 21st of November. Just a couple of things to mention. Congratulations to Amanda Vaca and Priscilla Seesman at JK, and Amber Scrodato and Madison Cherry at PV Parkview for being selected Staff Members of the Month. They also had a cultural diversity audit by Dr. Robin Daniels, and also to Dr. Stephanie Brown provided her strategic plan. So just to make those announcements.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Two quick comments for me. First, I'd like to thank the member of Miltown DPW and utility staff. I saw a notice the other day that we had a utility break, and I happened to have a little time on my hands, rode out there to Tracy Drive and saw those guys working. It's unfortunate that the pipe itself had just a hole in it. The only thing left was cement liner in that particular location. The guys worked their butts off. It was not warm out, and I went home, warmed up, went back, they were still there. I think they wrapped that up around 6:00 o'clock last night. So I want to thank them for their tireless efforts. I know it wasn't a planned activity and something that they wanted to do that day. I'm sure they had a lot on their plate already, and I thank them for their hard work in getting the water back on to those residents. Second thing I wanted to take note of, and I'll thank Councilman Zambrana for reminding me with the Toys for Tots drop off over there at the senior center, but Ariella's toy drive is also taking place this year. Please donate a new unwrapped toy to light up a child's face the way Ariella's did when she received a gift. In her memory, we donate the toys to children that are less fortunate during the holiday season, and drop off locations are as follows. The American Legion Post 25, Mike's Country Market, the Miltown Diner, Maria's Pizza and Subs, Kaylin Dance Studio, and Du Sal's Italian Restaurant and Pizzeria. Thank you for your help in keeping Ariella's smile alive. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to thank Councilman Revelinsky for a shout out, and a thank you to the DPW. Councilman Potter and I, actually on our way home from the League of Municipalities, since we've got the update that there was a water main break on Tracy Drive, stopped by, said hello. Of course, we got a lot of looks like, what are you doing here? Are you checking up on us? Like, no, we just wanted to see how you folks were doing. Don't take it personally, we're leaving now. But yeah, they were out there, they were out there for a while, and it was nice to see them out there. Just wanted to say thank you to them.
So, I just always have my end of the year comment of, if you would like to get involved in the town for any of our various commissions, boards, or committees, please remember you are running out of time to fill out a citizens' leadership form. Mimi, if they, if they.
Your hands off. If they were. Available at the table this evening, blank, and on our website.
If they were part of a committee or commission or board last year, they don't, do they need to fill out that again?
They do not need to do it again. We keep it on file. We encourage just people who are interested in venturing into new committees to readdress it and let us know, or if it's just someone new, then they do need to fill it out for us at least one time.
Yep, okay, awesome. Yep, that's all.
Thank you for that reminder. I was supposed to mention that, and I forgot. I appreciate it. So we do have many openings on all of the committees. Go on the website. You know, if you're interested in recreation, or what goes on at the pool, or what goes on at the parks, you know, REC Advisory Committee needs people. We have historic preservation. We have, what else?
Revitalization.
Revitalization.
HRC.
Yeah.
If I don't have.
Yeah, so there's something for everyone, and it's really, you know, helpful to the council and the borough as a whole for, to have people volunteer their time to join those committees.
And the time commitment, generally speaking, is about one to two hours a month, usually a monthly meeting, and they have a pretty regular schedule and then occasional activities. So join us.
Yep.
Out of curiosity, is that, by any chance, is there a complete list of available or openings that are available for the committees? Is that available on the website? Something that someone could scroll through and say, oh, look, we need two or three people in recreation.
There's at least one opening on any committee we have, so, but probably by December 15th, we'll have a more definite list as to how many vacancies on the actual committees. We're still, some people haven't actually said they don't want to serve again or whatever, so it might create a new vacancy, so I won't know for another couple of weeks.
There should be plenty. We're never going to turn people away.
Yeah, there's always room.
Even if there's one slot, we encourage them to still come.
I know, I know, I think of Recreation, if I'm not mistaken, or was it Revitalization this year? One of them, we had a little bit of a conflict. Someone was not really attending, but didn't want to back out, and we wanted to make room, but according to the ordinance, we could only have six.
Yeah, so that's.
So, you know, it'd be nice to know what is open if people are interested in.
And the clerk and I will go through that at the end of the year and ask, if people don't, haven't shown up all year, then we would ask them to step aside to let somebody that wants to join.
But the great thing, Councilman Revelinsky and others, is that you don't have to be appointed to the committee to attend meetings and participate and be active. It's a great way to dip your toe in the water, is to start coming to meetings and start participating, to see if you'd like to be a full-fledged member. They usually are voting on things, so it's not limited to folks who are appointed.
Exactly. As always, the more the merrier.
And it's pretty convenient because, again, like Revitalization, most of the meetings, if not all of them, were all via Zoom to make it a little bit more flexible for folks, especially for parents who have kids. We always have kids Zoom bombing every night. Hey, how are you? But it's fine, you know, it just makes it easier for folks to attend.
Yep. And everyone who was trying to guess all the committees, which you guys did a really good job on, but if you do go online and just put in the search bar, citizen leadership, it will pop up. All of the updates, including the change in the time for historic preservation, have been updated, and it's the most recent list, and you'll see a list of all the committees that are available.
Okay, great. Well, if there's no other comments, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you all. Have a good evening.